Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer this morning is from Hebrews. "Without faith it is impossible to please God because anyone who comes to Him must believe that He exists and that He rewards those who earnestly seek Him." And our dog this morning with Commissioner Kalo.
Our featured dog this week is a male, just a pup, six or seven months old. He's a mixed breed, the best of everything, I guess. Extremely friendly, there you go, well-mannered. He's available this Friday, April 1st, and if you get a chance, stop down at our kennel. We're down to 12 dogs, actually. So, our staff's been doing a great job and thank you to the public for coming in, taking care of our dogs, and giving them good homes. But, yeah, stop down, he'd make a great pet for somebody, huh? Come on, guy.
He's got the little mask coming over the way. Madam Clerk.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cordez.
That was pretty quick. I do have a potential hire at Solid Waste I want to talk with the Board about. Also, I want to update you with regard to our bargaining with the United States of America, potential sale, excuse me, potential purchase of real estate. I think that's it this morning. So, all of those topics will albow under the Sunshine Act for Executive Sessions discussion. So, to conclude from our meeting, we go into executive session to discuss those three issues. Thank you.
Approved waive the reading on the minutes of March 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Community Development, award granted with Bromhall Engineering Surveying Company in the amount of $4,860 for design and appropriation of bid specifications, bid tab regulations, review, and project inspections for CDBG-funded Phase II ADA walkway installation project in Ridgeville, and this will be paid from account CDBG FY '15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance for CHIP PY14 homeowner rehab and home repair activities, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen change orders to be paid from the CHIP program year 14 home repair and CHIP program year 14 home accounts, these being the most responsive compliance specifications. One is Jeddmet Construction Lorraine in the amount of $33,301 for Joseph and Deanna Bill at 126 Beck Road, Avon Lake for private owner rehab work. Two, Old Town Remodeling and Restoration, Avon Lake, in the amount of $33,608 for Scott and Sam Lyle-Medwood at 160 Morgan Street, Overland for private owner rehab. And three, Modern Roofing and Home Improvement, Seven Hills, in the amount of $5,499 for Ronald and Janice Mitchell at 378 South Pleasant Street, Overland, for roof replacement gutters and downspouts.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just want to thank Don Romancik and his department. I know they are really making an aggressive effort to make as many contractors and vendors aware of the opportunity to participate in this program. And I think I read some correspondence, you'd reached out to about 30 different possible contractors. Unfortunately, when it comes time to step up, it looks like we only have about four or three sometimes stepped forward. But I want to thank Don for the effort that he's making. You know, I know when you run a small business, sometimes it's hard to keep tabs on everything and try to put things on the front end of the pipeline instead of just focusing on the stuff that's actually in the pipeline. And as we say all the time, that, you know, when you work with government, it might take a little longer to get paid, but you will get paid, you know, as long as the work is all done, done well, done properly. But, so the opportunities are there to participate for the small businesses, and we just would hope that if you're in the contracting business, that you'll contact our Community Development Department, learn more about the program. We'll walk you through the paperwork, try to make it as easy as possible, right? But we certainly would like you to be able to participate. It's good to see we've got some Lorraine County vendors doing some work here. I notice we've got some folks from Cuyahoga County, too. Good work, Don.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with Vocal Link Language Services to provide a demand telephone language interpreter services for the limited English-speaking persons affected July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and we will be billed for minutes used.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Crown Please Adolph Foundation Amendment Subsidy Agreement with Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction for Community-Based Corrections Program, 408 Non-Residential Misdemeanor, this will increase grant to $219,505 and there is no catch match required.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
No additional comments. I want to thank you.
Mr. Kowski.
I have nothing to comment on this morning.
Commissioner, support.
This past Thursday, I was invited to a meeting in Vermillion, and I invited many of the police departments throughout Lorraine County to attend. And what it is, is a program to help addicts get into treatment. It's called PAARI, P-A-A-R-I. It's Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. And they're, one of the, the police chief from Lodi actually came, the first one in Ohio, to implement this program in his community. And what happens is if an addict decides they, they need help finally, they can come into a police station and ask for help, and instead of being arrested, they are found, able to be put into a treatment facility. We're doing a lot here in Lorraine County. Judge Moraldi has a drug court, and that seems to be doing a lot of good. And I talked to Andy Lovinsall from our jail administrator, and they're offering the Vivitrol shots to anybody who's an addict that's leaving jail. I think we have more to do, a multifaceted approach. We just received a email from Sheriff's committee about another program stepping up, and that's helping people with mental illness and addiction issues in our jail, because we're not going to, we are not going to arrest our way out of this problem. And if we just were able to use all that money that we're spending on incarcerating people to help them with their drug addictions, I think we would be in a lot better shape. So, I have more to talk about coming up in the, in the future. I will be attending in Columbus. Do you have something? Oh.
I was going to tell you, you can pass a resolution for the stepping up this morning.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't obligate us to anything. I have it right here. Right now, it's, it's really just getting on board to see where it goes. There's no fiscal commitment at this point. There's going to be that summit, and then those that, that have signed on will maybe eligible for some additional assistance if funds become available. It looks like funds aren't available to the '17 budget, which we know begins July 1st. Even if it ends up just being window dressing, I think we should sign on board so that we're at least in line if anything comes down the road. It, it looks to be a pretty good program. Just for clarification for the public, it's more with dealing with mental health, but we do know that people have multiple diagnoses. A lot of times, mental health problems lead to drug addiction problems. Not always, but, but there's a good prevalence of that. So, first you need to dry them out, and then you need to treat them for both dependency and mental health issues. And these programs could work very well in conjunction with each other, Commissioner.
Yep, I, I think the same thing. So, the, the Lodi, chief from the Lodi said that, you know, it's a small community, they have a problem there, like everywhere, but in this, this program is not costing anything. It's more of cooperation from other entities that help, you know, with drug and alcohol addiction. So, I'll bring more to that when I find out more. And I will be attending the summit in Columbus, it's all day, 7:30 to 5 o'clock, coming up in May, hopefully get some more information on how we can help address this problem.
Do you, do you care to have a resolution on that this morning?
I would love to, yeah. I didn't know if we were ready for that.
Well, it's, I mean, it's just, you, you can pass something, and then we'll craft the, the resolution for it afterwards, but you can do it from the floor. I know Madam Clerk doesn't always like that, but...
I have the resolution already done.
Do you have?
Oh, you do? Oh, okay. Well, yes, I would absolutely, yeah. I'd like to...
And I think we're the only third county that will pass.
Okay.
Or we might be the fourth.
There's 11 counties in Ohio.
Do you have anything that you need to read to, or just a resolution in support of stepping up?
Perimeter Step Up Initiative, yeah.
Initiative, okay. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All right, just a little bit, like I said, I sent this out a month ago, because Commissioners' Association actually grabbed this after, out of NACAR, National Association of Counties. And just a little bit more, it's, basically, the call to action is a vague promise for reform. They're working on an action plan they can work towards. And again, it talks about the mental illness issue in the jails, but then it also talks about substance abuse, program directors to work in a coordinated effort. So, I mean, it's a good program, and I saw the sheriff's email came through yesterday about, he'd like Andy Lovinsall to work on it, so, that little bit helps.
It's certainly, it's certainly more expensive to incarcerate than it is to treat. And usually, it's a 1 to 10 factor, as a rule of thumb, so...
1 to 10 factor being, what, $1 for treatment?
For every dollar of diversion and treatment, it usually precludes $10 of criminal justice dollars being spent. And so, realizing that it's costing 90-plus dollars a day to incarcerate, and even more in some of the state prisons and federal prisons, you can see a lot of money could be put towards treatment rather than incarceration. And then, even though it appears to be quite a sum of money, it actually reduces the burden on the taxpayers and the, and the endgame.
Yep. As I've talked about before, one of the best events that I would attend in Columbus each year when I was working as a legislature was called "The Faces of Recovery," and every year, they would bring in about a dozen individuals who, each would spend a minute telling their story, and talk about individuals who, you know, lived in a car for 10 years because they were homeless and, and their life was in such disarray because of addiction and mental health issues. And now, you know, that same individual owns a house and is raising a family and going to college and working, and, but the whole thing is that we have to invest the money in, in the people with the hope that they'll be productive members of society, and they'll be able to pay their taxes and generate revenue for us, and, and keep their families together, and just make the, the state a much better place. But, you know, when folks go without treatment, I was having this conversation with somebody the other day, can you stop and think of probably all the crime that would go down in our county?
Oh, absolutely.
If people don't even have to run out every day to try to get their, their drug money for their fix, to prevent having to go through the pains of all the withdrawal that takes place when they try to get off their drugs. But, so this is really an important step, and, you know, read through the, the correspondence from the state, and, you know, I think we can always do a, a better job of allocating resources for it, but as the Administrator said, this at least gets us in the queue. So, when we start to find out about what's going to be available and what type of assistance will be available, we'll already be in the queue, and as Madam Clerk said, what, maybe the fourth county at this point to join on. So, yes, I definitely support...
That I have resolutions in hand.
They have resolutions in support...
That I have resolutions in support, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, so, yes, I'm certainly in support of this.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Yeah, Matt, actually, Commissioner Lundey actually came to the meeting as well, and a young girl who was an addict and went through the PAARI program and went to the police station turned herself in. She was, she was a great speaker, great advocate, wanting to help other addicts get, get clean, too. I also talked to the prosecutor's office, because there's some concerns about if an addict would bring drugs to the police station, that they would have to be arrested, and that could be a problem. But, like she said, the addict, recovering addict said, chances are, if you have drugs, you're going to use them, you're not going to bring them to the police station with you. So, a lot of good things, that, this is just pieces of the puzzle to, to help, help these people. The other thing I did this past Monday was my goodwill board meeting. We talked a lot about the donation bins around, and some of the communities are talking about banning the boxes unless you have a brick-and-mortar facility in the county or in the city that's helping bring some of that money back to our community, so. And lastly, I need to wish my twin boys, Jordan and Joe, a very happy birthday. They turn 26 years old today.
Wow, that's great.
And I thought I was only 26, so...
How old does that make you?
I'm not telling. Everybody already knows, so. End of my report.
All right. Last week, I talked to the Board during my comments about a gentleman, Tom Kelling, who's a laid-off steelworker from Lorraine here. He was at the town hall for Hillary Clinton a couple weeks ago, prior to the Ohio primary, and got up to ask a question, talk about the laid-off steelworkers. And Tom's in here today. If Tom would come up, let him talk about the issue he brought up about sending letters of support in regards to a letter that he sent out. Mayor Rittenhour has already supported it, and if he can give us an update on an ID he'd like to deal with, and then tell us about what's going on now in regards to the Workforce Development Program you're in since you were laid off from the steel plant.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
I didn't know I was going to speak. I would have dressed... Actually, exactly what you said, I, more or less, sit, now, I won't say I was sitting around, but just thinking, and I was thinking about the auto industry was, I don't like the word bailout, but it was assisted. The baking system was assisted, and I was like, well, where is the help for the steelworkers? The, if it wasn't for steel, you wouldn't be building cars, or you wouldn't have those buildings that they're building cars in. So, I wrote a letter, and it was backed by Chase Rittenhour from the, from Lorraine. He actually sent it out to our senators, and also Marcy Capter and a couple other people. I passed the email stage with them. I do have phone numbers. I'm talking to aides, but it's very, what's the word? It's tough, it's hard, it's hard to get to. I'm actually waiting on phone calls from all three of them. In fact, tomorrow will probably be my day where I call them back, just to cause more, you know, to get something going and everything. Like you said, I did go and CNN with Hillary Clinton, asked a question, she kind of went around it, but, you know, that was okay. I guess one of our, our major problem is the illegal dumping of foreign steel that was brought here. They do have tariffs out on them now. I think China's getting taxed 266 percent, I think it is, right now. The problem is, that steel's here now. There's steel from Korea, China, Italy, geez, there's even, there's even more places, and that steel's here now, that's why we're not working. Being laid off right now is, it's, it's a hard situation. You have to watch what you're doing, everything. I have to start looking into school again. I'm in the process of doing that now, and with Ohio Means Jobs, that's, it's not just go and, I want to go to school for this, there's, there's many things that I'm going through. Now, I was on a computer for three hours yesterday trying to find stuff just for Ohio Means Jobs, so they can approve me to go to school. I mean, it's, it's pretty hard. There's a lot of steelworkers that are doing that right now. And so, I was thinking, after, actually, after Facebook, when you posted on Facebook, I said, why can't we, you know, I think I'll give you guys, reach out to you guys and ask if you would read my letter and possibly compose a letter that I could use. And I think, Mr. Kalo, you said you would even pass that on to our senators. With our senators, Mr. Brown, Sheriff Brown, he's one of our biggest backers in the steel industry. I got some unsettling news from their aide about our, the situation, and so I'm hoping maybe if we had more people or more, you know, like the Commissioners, maybe send to him, maybe he'll start thinking about it more, and maybe push a little harder for us, or do something, but there's definitely, definitely a problem. The last council meeting in Lorraine, Lorraine City is going to be $3 million short, and most of that is because of the steel mill being down. I mean, I know REP is a whole other, I should have said from US Steel. REP is down, US Steel is struggling, who knows how long they're going to run. I do believe it's, it'll come back, it's just when, you know, it's, it's tough out there right now. So, I was just kind of hoping that maybe you guys could help us out a little bit, and...
Be glad to. How long have you been a steelworker, Tom?
21 years.
Wow.
That's another situation. I'm in that middle age area, 21 years, I can't throw away. I mean, that's a lot of time and money and pension and everything, and then to go back to school, I'm only 47, but to go back to school to learn another trade or something else, that's, you know, that's a tough situation. I can understand, you know, some of the guys that only had a couple years, they're a lot younger, you know, it'd be a lot easier for them, but there's, there's quite a few guys with my time that they're all, you know, what, what do we do? You know, it's, it's kind of tough right now, so...
It's difficult with the dumping of the foreign steel in our country, and then, or even our US manufacturers aren't even using US steel.
They're not.
I mean, that's a...
No.
Major problem. I know there are some issues between Republican quality and stuff, if they were bringing them based on the scrap they were using.
There are videos out there of, yes, the rebarb that they use for concrete, it came from Iran. There's a video of a guy hitting it on a piece of concrete, and it broke.
It broke.
And we're going to use that in our highways and our, our bridges, you know...
It's a shame the way things are done. They do, something in government in regards to roads and infrastructure, I'm actually working with a committee now nationwide on it, is the different requirements, you know, products to use, where, you know, Ohio may do more paved miles per year than maybe the state of Illinois, but their product minimum standard is a lot higher than what Ohio's is, and you end up in these issues using subpar products, and as I said, we produce it right here, more competitive, than when they're being subsidized by their countries. You know, if you didn't have to pay healthcare, didn't have to pay a pension, I mean, make a lot more profits, too. So, it's probably cheaper, so...
Yeah.
Board?
Yep. It's certainly, close to my heart, I come from generations of steelworkers. Of course, I say from Pennsylvania instead of Pittsburgh, because I get booed out of the room all the time. But, a lot of my family members on my mother's side worked for US Steel, and, you know, it put a lot of bread on the table and kept the roof over a lot of people's heads for decades, and so I know how challenging it is, and, you know, I know that, you know, Senator Brown's talked about this dumping issue that, that's going on with this foreign steel, but, you know, the sad part, as I've talked about before, is, is that I wish that the US automakers would make more of a concerted effort to use, you know, US steel for their products. And, you know, certainly, we have a lot of auto workers in, in Ohio that we want to keep working, but at the same time, we should be using US steel for those, for those products. And as you pointed out, you know, the country definitely stepped up to help the auto industry, and, you know, certainly more efforts and probably better efforts can be made to help with the, the steel industry as well, too. And so, I would certainly be supportive of, of a resolution asking that, you know, the federal government, obviously, make this, you know, priority on their radar screen.
You wrote an excellent letter. My, my father was a union rep for US Steel back when there was like 12,000 people working there. I mean, it was the good, good times. And then, back in the late 80s, I worked for a program called the Steelworkers Reemployment Program. It was for laid-off steelworkers to help them, you know, get job skills and, you know, learn how to do interviews and get back into the workplace. So, I'm full support of it, and I just hope, and I really believe that it's going to come back, and I hope it's, you know, soon, like when the next year or two that we're back up and running there, so.
Well, let's hope sooner or ne'er, because the way they're playing with unemployment in Ohio, that won't be very good for any of our families.
Yes. In fact, when you bring that up, there is a Senate bill, Senate Bill 394, that would pretty much deplete everybody. It's a terrible bill, so, I believe that's the...
Have you already done a resolution against that?
Right, against that, right. At a time when it's more difficult for people to find new employment and, you know, needing a time to go through training for new employment, and here they want to actually shorten the window, just makes no sense to me, but I was always amazed, some people have ice in their veins down there, hard to believe.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom, appreciate it. Also, this week...
Did we, did we already pass the resolution?
I thought we were going to do a letter for it.
A letter? Okay.
Are you going to craft a letter for it, or you just want to do a resolution?
Whichever way.
Both?
Both. We'll craft a letter after resolution.
Yeah, that would be fun.
You brought a resolution. You made the motion, I think, so I was...
A letter and a resolution, so, I'll change the motion to that. Supporting that the federal government support the US steel industry, take a look at supporting it, much like the federal government was able to do to help out the auto industry.
And the banks.
And the banks. Yeah, let's not forget the banks, right.
Let's not forget the banks.
Wall Street, we can bail out Wall Street, right.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Also, this week, I had a conference call, didn't have to go to Columbus, it was nice. Justice and Public Safety meeting update. They're going through the MBR now, and by any review for the budget, but it looks like they're going to hold steady at 49 to 50 percent on the indigent attorney fee reimbursement, which ties into the discussion we had in the past couple of weeks, so, at least that shouldn't be going anymore. There was also an article in Scene Magazine, it's kind of funny, Judge Moraldi, I had seen it and I read it, again, on Facebook, the way we do all of our communications, and are reading nowadays about his new court that he has implemented, and Scene Magazine did a really nice article, and then he sent it over to us, copied us all on it. So, doing a real nice job over there in regards to the issues facing us, tying into the mental health, the drug, the opiate, so, let's hope we can get our arms around it to some degree, and...
I watched a video, I was looking at information about the PAARI and the help instead of handcuffs, and there was another, on YouTube, you could find a lot of information, there was a girl going around doing a, a story about Russia, and they said 20% of the population, population in Russia is addicted to heroin.
Yep.
20% of the population. I mean, this could get crazy, so we need to figure out how to stop it before it gets, it's already out of control, but before it gets even more out of control.
End of my report.
Yep. Yeah. Also had the opportunity to attend the, the parry meeting and, uh, wanna, uh, thank, uh, Commissioner Kukowski for, uh, letting me know about the meeting and inviting me to the meeting. And, uh, yeah, this Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative, it's actually a program, I think, that started in New England. And I know there was a 60 Minutes, uh, story that was done on it. It's a, it's a pretty impressive program and it says that it's greatly reduced heroin deaths, uh, in the New England area. Um, certainly we have to work through probably with the Attorney General and the legislature some of the laws. I mean, just even the example of if you show up and you're turning in all your drugs and you're ready to go into rehab, um, that, you know, under Ohio law, you still need to be, you know, arrested at that point. Uh, they're trying to work out, you know, a, a program where you can turn your stuff in, surrender and not face those kinda consequences. Make it easier for people to, to turn themselves in. Uh, yeah, but Chief Keel, I think his name is, at Lodi, uh, he's certainly doing great work down there in Lodi and, and, uh, the lady who had battled addiction in the past now wants to try to help others by the name of Nicole, uh, very passionate about this. She's already told me she's had some conversations with the Attorney General's office and she's really trying to push for more meetings on, uh, making the changes that need to be made in Ohio law. We had the planning commission meeting, uh, this past week, continuing to talk about the, the growth issues going on in Eaton and Columbia Township. And we wanna try to bring the township representatives in and talk about, uh, better planning, I guess, and thinking about, uh, the whole process when you get into subdivisions. And I know the county administrator had stressed that in the meeting as well too, so we're in the process of lining that up through community development. Hope to be hosting that soon. Um, also had a meeting the other day with the Lakefront Lorraine County Group as we continue to talk about how to strategize and bring about more economic activity to the lakefront as we await for word from the WACO on our planning grant application. Hopefully we'll hear that in June and hopefully we'll be successful. Uh, have plans of attending the V A Administration Town Hall that's being held tonight at Lorraine County Community College. Um, also, uh, wanna commend everybody on the great work done on Pulse Magazine, it looks great, uh, talking about Cabell's upcoming, uh, Walleye Tournament and I think Parker's Grill's in there as a featured restaurant. And that's something that, uh, we wanna work a lot more on, getting the word out about the great restaurants that we also have in Lorraine County. And, uh, definitely enjoyed Easter with family. It's always a, a big event every single year. I'm not a big ham eater, so I think I had chicken instead of ham, but, uh, the only way I can eat ham is I gotta bury it in mustard, so that's, uh...
If you, if you hang out with Italians, you get lasagna.
Oh, you, that's right. You do get lasagna with Italians, that's right. So, that, that completes my report.
You know, uh, Pulse Magazine's been one of our bigger initiatives that almost died, um, during the tenure of a previous commissioner. Um, it really spotlights the things that you may not know exist in Lorraine County. I'm always amazed when we sit down and we plan for the year on different stories that may, that may be able to be used. And I've lived here for 25 years, some of the things I don't realize are right here in our own backyard. Uh, and especially trying to spotlight our restaurants and get that Pulse Magazine out there, because there is starting to be quite a few very nice eateries, uh, presenting themselves in Lorraine County. I think that's only going to continue to grow. Uh, I think it's, well, we're in year five or six now with, uh, with the Pulse...
Yeah, we got somewhere around there.
It's, it's a great collaboration between the college, the county, the chamber, uh, and some of the biggest sponsors was Lorraine National Bank. J V S is a sponsor, um, and, uh, a few others. So, we've been able to hold that together for a long time.
Yeah, it looks great.
Uh, Commissioners, send a proclamation to Autism Speaks Ohio Chapter proclaiming the month of April and April 2nd as Autism Awareness in Lorraine County, who is also proclamation to Maricorx proclaiming April 5th as National Service Day recognition in Lorraine County. And then next Tuesday, April 5th at 9:00 is your viewing on Butter Nut Ridge Road for correspondence.
Uh, well, I move that the, uh, we approve the board correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Yeah, this is the public comment phase. Did you wish to share some thoughts with us this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning. We're gonna give you a microphone, so, you know...
Yeah, keep you in front of a podium where they won't see you.
Yeah, keep you in front of the podium there, right.
Right there. There you go.
Hi, thank you, Floyd. Hi, good morning.
Is that on? I don't think it's on.
Is it on? It's red.
It's on the bottom there.
The green?
It's red.
Councilman?
I might've turned it off when I set it down.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, my name is Rhoda Lee. I came for one reason, but now I see that there are two issues that I would like to speak about. Number one, I would like to applaud you as Commissioners on the stance that you're taking about drug addiction. Didn't realize that, but it's very much needed. And as you say, instead of building prisons, we need to be building hospitals and taking care of those who cannot take care or will not take care of themselves. So, it's difficult. But the other thing, and most importantly, I would like to thank you as Commissioners and applaud you for the stance that you've taken on the Confederate flag being sold at our county fair. Number one, I'd like to say our fair is a time for fun and family. The things that the people have done and worked for throughout the year are for ages and all of them. So, it should be a place for fun and family, not for anything that symbolizes hatred at all, not even in the past. As that, we'd like to say I am one who knows what that Confederate flag symbolizes. As a young girl growing up in Mississippi, in the late 30s, early 40s, 50s, when they would ride through with flags on their cars or on their wagons, we, blacks would go into our homes, close the doors and not come out because we knew what it symbolized, that something was going to happen within neighborhoods. I was a young girl when Emmett Till was murdered in Mississippi. I was born in Mississippi. Therefore, I know for a fact what it symbolizes. It's symbolized even back then, a nation divided. And we're supposed to be a nation of one under one flag. The Confederate flag does not recognize any country or symbolizes any particular country, but a nation divided when we were divided in a time. And as such, I had my grandson go on the internet today and he went to Google what the symbol of the Confederate flag means, and I would like to, you know, read it to you. The Confederate flags are all relics from a time when southern states seceded and started a war that killed thousands of people. The war was over slavery and we cannot remove the history of slavery and institutional racism that plagued, after all, it was, that flag, after all, was a battle flag used by the side who fought for slavery. It has no place now in our day and time for this. The only two flags I think that need to be flown is our flag of the United States of America, which we pledge allegiance to, and our state flag under which we live as citizens. And I wish to applaud you as Commissioners and would hope that other elected officials, clergy will come out through our county and let them know that Lorraine County has no time or no place for that. We have other issues that we have to deal with in our county about jobs, education, and making Lorraine County what it has been and what it will be again if we all come together and work for it. So, you know, I applaud you for what you've done and hopefully other agencies, public officials, cities will come and come together. And let's not do that. Let's make the county fair a fun place for friends and families, and we do not need this, and I thank you for denouncing it.
Thank you, Rhoda.
Yeah, thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others wishing to participate in public comment? Well, seeing none, uh, I move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues that were outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.